Call to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting for November 17th, 2016. Welcome everybody, please join us for the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the flag of the state of New Mexico, the free and civil, permanent friendship among the United Nations.
Madam Manager, do there any changes need to come on the regular meeting agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make one minor change to item I. I'd like to add language at the end to say approve/disapprove agreement number A 16-46, grant agreement with state of New Mexico Local Government Division for CBDG project 16-C-RS-I-04-G-91, and for the chairman to execute the agreement upon receipt.
So I'm assuming that's because that agreement is in route? Make the motion, we accept the agenda has changed? Second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so we'll move into public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes, and any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may be requested to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So at this time, the commission will stand for public input. Is there any public input today? Come on up, state your name for the record, please.
Where's that thing? There it is. Good morning, everybody. My name is Kristi Boldt. I'm here representing Grant County as your representative to the Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging, affectionately known as the AAA. Good morning, Chair, and other commissioners and staff. I'm here just quickly to tell you, at the last meeting, the advisory committee meets quarterly, and in October, we were informed there, and it was a big meeting, all of the providers of the state come except for those in Bernaleo County, which is their own, but all the other counties are there. At that time, not only were providers made aware that they were to be limited to 45% of their budget, that they received the money from the Aging and Long-Term Services Department, they were also told that another 5.5% cut will be coming, and they are to adjust their contracts and continue to deliver services to the providers, I mean to the... So it's another one of those, and I'm actually, I mean, it was, the distress in that room was palpable. It was, it was bad, and I was just there as the county representative. So we're, again, another area of our population that is going to be hit hard. So one of the things that I'm here to do, and I hope if it's okay if I can approach and give you these RAC cards, I'm on the legislative committee of the AAA, and we worked to come up with these for legislative efforts to at least have a level of awareness with elected officials and all through the state, but at the county level, would like you to just help support funding levels for the AAA through Aging and Long-Term Services. If we can just keep them where they are and not lose anymore, perhaps our seniors won't suffer quite as badly. So if I could bring these to you?
You do.
We came up with the wording, and it essentially says, because we can, you should, you meaning the legislature, that should appropriate enough money to support these services statewide, and these are all the reasons why on the RAC card. Please call or ask me if you have any other questions regarding this as session comes up, but we'll struggle like everybody else, and appreciate your support very much.
You know, we're advocating for more of a core, of the core services that the state provides, through those not to be cut, and start cutting the services that are outside that core. So I assume seniors would follow inside the core.
Fingers crossed. Thank you very much.
Further public input? Yes, ma'am? Good morning.
My name is Pam O'Brien, and just wanted to come by and introduce myself to you this morning, and also compliment you on your fine county of Grant County. It's very well-run, and you offer a lot of great amenities and community services, so well done.
Thank you.
You should have received a letter from me earlier this month, and I just want to urge you to please view it in a favorable light. I think it would just make Grant County that much more enjoyable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public input? Last chance. Okay, we're moving on. Minutes. Approve or disapprove the September 13th, 2016 special meeting minutes? Can we do all these as consent agenda?
As the chair, I would like to go ahead and make a motion on A, B, and C of the minutes, approving the September 13th, 2016 special meeting minutes, approval of October 20th, regular meetings, and approval of November the 7th, 2016 special meeting.
One second. There's a motion and a second to approve the September 13th, October 20th, and November 7th minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Financial reports, Bernadette, or who's here today? Linda, can you do the expenditure report for us, please?
Members of the board, James, you. We have an expenditure report in front of you for an approval, and it's for the period ending November 14th, 2016. The total AP checks in this report is $3,298,733.49, and included in that amount is a check to Ascend Aviation, and that is for October and November fuel, totaling $33,044.22. A check to Suckathon Construction, in the amount of $24,507.07, and that is a project payment for the Forgotten Veterans Workshop. A check to High Desert Humane Society, in the amount of $16,500, and that is for the Animal Control Services for the first quarter of 2016. A check to ACA Architects, in the amount of $29,890, and that is for Architectural Services for the Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department Station. A check to Architecture Workshop, in the amount of $13,025.56, and that is for Architectural Services for the Conference Center renovation. A check to James Hamilton Construction, in the amount of $2,91,358.75, and that is for the runway construction at the airport. A check to Bohannon Houston, in the amount of $28,282.21, and that is for professional services for miscellaneous airport projects. A check to Southwest Concrete and Paving, in the amount of $279,599.33, and that is road construction materials for the Rosedale Road Colonias. And then we have payroll checks for pay periods number 22 and 23, in the amount of $423,486.32. So the grand total of the expenditure report is $3,722,219.81.
Thank you, Linda. Can I get a motion on the financial report for November 14th, 2016?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the November 14th, 2016 expenditure report?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the November 14th expenditure report. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Linda, can you go through the financial report for the month ending September 30th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. We'll begin with the general fund. In the general fund, we had a beginning cash balance on July 1, 2016, of $3,291,793. We have revenues today, oh, and I'm sorry, this is for the quarter ending 9/30/2016. So revenues through September 30th was $1,283,269, and transfers out from the general fund is $652,49. Expenditures to date is $2,259,032, with a quarter-ending cash balance of $1,663,981, leaving us with an available cash balance of $1,99,223, and a reserve of $564,758. In the road department, we have a beginning cash balance of, at July 1, 2016, of $305,251, revenues to date of $198,238, and expenditures to date of $418,638, leaving us with a quarter-ending cash balance of $84,851, with a reserve of $34,887, with an available cash balance of $49,964. In the detention center, we had a $0 beginning cash balance, revenues to date of $216,350, transfers into the detention center of $482,213, expenditures to date of $671,293, leaving us with a quarter-ending cash balance of $27,270, and there is no required reserve for the detention center, so our available cash balance is $27,270.
Thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can we get a...
Motion to approve the quarterly financial report ending September 30th, 2016.
One second. There's a motion and a second to approve the financial report ending September 30th, 2016. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, item F. Approve or disapprove an inventory deletion from the lower members' volunteer fire department? Eleven fire helmets, 37 pairs of bunker pants, 23 bunker coats, and 22 pairs of bunker boots. They're going to try to get that distributed throughout other fire departments, if so.
Motion to approve, or did you want to go ahead and do that?
Yeah, go ahead and do it.
Motion to approve the inventory deletion of lower members' volunteer fire department.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the inventory deletion for lower members' volunteer fire department. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all that in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. This is Claudia Durnick, has a continuing discussion regarding the watershed district. Ms. Durnick?
Good morning, everybody. And so since I was here last month, I had provided the commission with evidence of the 1984 unlawful expansion of the Upper Gila watershed district. And within days after that meeting, I met with Ms. Webb, and I gave her all of the available evidence that I had, and upon speaking to her, she said she had already looked at the statutes, and that she agreed that they were probably not followed, and that she was going to fully review what was provided to her. So I would just like to say that our tax dollars have to be used for lawful purposes, and in view of this, what is Grant County going to do about this issue? And we've all received our 2016 tax bills, which I'm going to go and pay today, and they reflect the watershed district, and for my husband and I, this totals $318 for the year. So if we continue paying this, we're going to continue to compound what has already transpired. So I think that there are a lot of people in the Cliff Gila community who would most assuredly like to have this tax removed, as they're hard-pressed to pay their taxes in the first place, and it's going to lessen their burden considerably to have this five mil removed. So the final request that we're making is that this district be returned to its 1959 legal borders, and that the tax be eliminated from everybody else who was annexed into that district. Do you have questions?
No, but since you actually told us what Ms. Webb said, I'm going to give her a chance to say that that is what she said.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I did state was that I had reviewed the statute, and it was very clear that there was a process, and according to the information you provided, it appeared that they may have not. However, I have been reading through 30-some years of minutes. At this point, it is unclear to me whether you are correct or they were correct. You also stated that it took you several months to review this information. It's going to take me at least as long as it took you to review all the information. At some point, I may turn it over to a third party to review. I did not agree or disagree with you the day we met.
We're still working on it. And I think we stand where we talked about, that it is a concern of ours, it certainly is, and that we want to make sure that one of the citizens are being taxed, that it is fair and right. And I know that, I've been in a couple of times to see Charlene, and she's been working on it, a lot, and so we are very concerned about it, and we're looking into it, so you're not being pushed to the side, we're just making sure everything is right before we make that decision.
Well, then, the next question that I would ask is, are the funds that are being collected for our 2016 taxes going to be released to the district? Or are the funds going to be held pending a final decision?
I'm not sure, but Raoul, in order to affect the tax that you pay, you have to protest at the appropriate time, isn't that correct?
Mr. Chairman, board members, county attorney, the process, and I'm glad that I have the treasurer here, yeah, anytime there's a dispute on the tax rate, it has to be protested through district court. And what happens is, you have to pay your property taxes in full, and you go and talk to a district court there at the county courthouse, and file a petition of protest for contesting the tax rate.
I thought we first have the protest in terms of...
Yes, well, that goes to the treasurer's office first. They'll protest in the treasurer's office, and then they'll go ahead and go and file a petition at the courts, yes, and that's on the tax rate itself. Your contesting is actually the rate, you're not contesting value.
Right, so when the rates come out, that is the time that you initiate your first protest, and then, yes, and there is another avenue through the district court.
To the district court, that is correct.
That's normally how you would affect your taxes, whether or not you have to pay them. But we'll look into the issue, and I have to be honest with you, this isn't really complicated, because it's happened so long ago, we can't just give you an answer in a month.
Okay, all right, well, then I'll check in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you've done on it.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Ben Vasminson, presentation regarding local food procurement draft policy.
Hello, everybody. Good to see you guys again. As you know, I'm going to be talking a little bit about a local procurement policy. This is of interest to the Grant County and regional food policy councils. This is sort of a growing trend across the nation to redirect money that's already spent by county, state, and local entities back into the community, by purchasing local foods in order to strengthen local food economies, and get more nutritious food, things like that. My question to you, have you guys had a chance to review the policy? And, you know, maybe some general feedback, what you all would need to move forward with a policy like this?
I can start. First thing, I'm concerned that it won't follow the procurement act, so if we did pass it, it could be struck down. In my personal opinion, probably we ought to send it to Abby, and let her make sure what parts are legal and what parts aren't legal. My other just gut instinct is, is anytime you give somebody a preference, that you have to buy from somebody if they're within 10%, all you've done is increased your food cost.
Correct.
That doesn't necessarily bode well with me either, but one thing for sure, I don't think it follows the procurement act, so...
Is that a state procurement act?
Mm-hmm.
I totally agree. I think we just need council to review it and take it from there.
Unfortunately, you know, we, well, unfortunately, but as to your policy, we follow state statutes when it comes to purchasing just about everything, so that would include food, so we'd be limited by the state statutes on procurement. I also want to let you know that, you know, I think we're all in favor of purchasing locally, but again, we're limited by our state statutes. And you may have heard that we're transferring the seniors program to HMS shortly, and that's really the only department that we purchase on a regular basis, large amounts of food. And so once that program transfers, I'm not sure how much your policy is going to apply to the county anymore.
Would the hospital fall under...
No, they do their own...
They're separate.
So if you wanted them to adopt a similar policy, you probably want to go directly to them. And with the detention center, we contract out the food, so we're not actually purchasing the food, the preparation of the food. So again, once the seniors program is transferred, probably your policy is not going to be that applicable to the county. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Yeah, that's good to know. I sort of had an inkling that maybe the hospital purchasing was separate from the county.
It is separate, so...
Yeah, and I don't think we have the authority to tell them where to buy their food.
Okay. And we hear that a lot, about the concern about the prices being more, and we want to make clear in any policy like these, that the buyers, we don't want them to have to bend over backwards or be, you know, pressured at all to make unnecessary concessions to buy the local food. Other ways these policies have worked out is instead of saying within 10%, it's targeting maybe $10,000 a year for local products, fruits, vegetables, and things like that. We are working with schools and other cities and counties as well in the region to do these.
Okay. Anything else, Bill?
You might want to start working with the legislature to see if you can get local preferences for purchasing of food put into the procurement code.
For the state?
Yeah, at the state level.
Now, you know, if something like that was passed at the state, within that apply, would you guys be beholden to follow those guidelines?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, that sounds, I guess that sounded reasonable.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate your talk. So we'll just refer that draft policy to Abby to make sure that we're right on that, and if we're wrong, then you can bring it back.
Agreed.
All right, agreements. Oh, this is the one we don't have. All right, approve or disapprove the chair to execute upon receipt agreement number A 1646, grant agreement with the state of New Mexico Local Government Division for the CBDG project number 16-C-R-S-I-04-G-91. What project is that, Raoul?
The Tucasa.
That's the Tucasa project. We've been waiting for this grant for a long time, so...
For a long time.
So move to approve?
I'm going to second that. All right, there's a motion to approve the chair to execute upon receipt agreement number A 1646. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for item I. Approve or disapprove agreement number A 1648, inmate housing contract with Hidalgo County for the housing of female inmates?
Motion to approve agreement A 1648. Second.
So motion and a second to approve A 1648. This agreement is for us to house female inmates for Hidalgo County. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Can I get a motion to recess the board of county commissioners?
Second.
Call back to, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Almost got ahead of myself. Motion passes. Call to order the Grant County Indigent Hospital Healthcare Claims Board. We have one item on the agenda today.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the October 2016 Health Plan Claims Indigent Fund in the amount of $12,701.38.
Sir? There's a motion and a second to approve the October 2016 Health Plan Claims. That is $11,795.38 to Gila Regional Medical Center, and a $906 claim for ambulance service to GRMC, for a total of $12,701.38. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the healthcare claims board?
Second.
All those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Board of County Commissioners, and at this time, we will stand for the elected officials' reports. Sheriff, would you like to start?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I just want to report, it's been fairly busy for us. We're getting prepared and ready for the holiday season, you know, usually those turn out to be pretty busy for us, so we're getting ready for that. I did want to report that yesterday I had two of my staff graduate the academy in Santa Fe, so I'm very pleased and proud of these two gentlemen that attended the academy and completed it. They will be hitting the streets through our in-house training here pretty soon, so we'll have two additional deputies out on the force. You know, I just hope that with everything going on, that I can hang on to these guys. Right now, with them coming back, I'll be fully staffed, but, you know, with everything going on, and money-wise and that, I'm hoping that I continue to keep my staff. So with that, I'm proud to say that. Other than that, it's been business as usual. I want to thank my staff for what they do. They work really hard out there and provide the best service possible that we can with the resources that we have, so I want to thank them for everything that they do, and I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and hopefully everybody stays safe out there and continues to go on with life. I do still want to just encourage the community to keep us aware of their surroundings. If anything's going on suspicious, to please call us, we will respond and look into what's going on in the areas. But everything right now is going good, so, you know, I want to thank you guys for your support and whatever you can do to help us continue to run smoothly. I did also want to update you real quick on our radio situation, our communications. I did speak to, as you guys are all aware, it was determined the interference was coming from El Paso, and it's also a sheriff's office that has the same frequency as us that caused the interference. A week, about a month ago, during the holiday weekend, El Paso shut down their repeater that uses our frequency, and since then, we haven't had any issues. But I was told by the gentleman that I'm dealing with out of El Paso that they might need to turn it back on because they were having problems with other repeaters they're using. So right now, it's working good for us, but I think once they turn it back on, we're going to go back to the same situation. So I really strongly encourage that we continue to do research and figure out how we can either, what we can really do to get that matter resolved. Right now, everything's been working good. I have requested a quote to get another frequency, or do whatever we need to do. I'm still waiting on that communication center to get back with me. But I think because of the safety and concern of it, it needs to be addressed. I do have GoberHealth in helping us with it, so we're just hurry up and wait. Fortunately, we've had the luxury of not having them turn it back on, and it's been working good for us, so just wanted to keep you updated on that. And if anything new changes, I am in contact with Charlene, and we'll continue to work with whatever we need to do to make things better.
You know, Sheriff, as you probably know, at the dispatch meeting yesterday, this not only is affecting Grant County, but Odetele County, Sierra County, and Hidalgo County, this is a huge issue.
That's correct.
And, you know, we've had that frequency for some time, and how they ever got to do it themselves, I'm still in question in my mind, how they were able to do it.
Right, and that was something that I had a question on, that me and Charlene questioned, that I did send... that I did send a request to FCC how that happened, I have not heard back from them. So, we're waiting on to see what really occurs, because we have had that frequency for many, many years.
Someone wasn't paying attention, whether they authorized that.
Yes.
Another thing I wanted to mention, if I may, Sheriff, is that yesterday I had the opportunity, a friend of mine passed away, and I was suddenly, yesterday morning at eight, and I was there all morning with the family, and your officers were there. There was two of them whenever I was there. And you talk about professional, they, I mean, it wasn't just taking a report, they were working with the widow and talking to her, calming her down, arranging things. They called me, asked me to come out, and it was amazing, and I just want to compliment you and your officers who took that call.
Thank you.
There was two of them, and they were excellent.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, Sheriff, I assume, is there anything else we can do to alleviate this radio? I mean, is there something else? Or are we doing everything, it's just taking time?
Well, we, there is other options that we can do, but we're trying to work with El Paso because they are also a sheriff's office, and from my understanding, it's not their fault this happened, somebody dropped the ball somewhere. And so, we're trying to work together on this, but if we really wanted to push the issue, we could be having the FCC involved, and I guess Gober has another organization that deals with this that will push the issue, but I don't know if we want to go that extreme at the moment, because they are trying to resolve this issue, but I think if they end up turning it back on and it affects us even worse, then we're going to have to do something.
Then we have to, okay.
But I did request, like I say, from Advanced Communications to get us a quote on possibly getting another frequency, and I know we shouldn't because we had it first, but we need to resolve this issue, put it behind us and move forward, and keep my staff safe out there and the community. That's the biggest priority right now.
Okay. Keep us surprised.
Sheriff, I also had some residents out of the Arenas Valley, Whiskey Creek area, calling up on say that there's been a lot of public nuisance noise in that area after 10:30. Does our ordinance have enough bite for you all to do something about it? Is it an ordinance that you think we need to revisit? What do you recommend on this noise?
The ordinance is specific on the time that we can enforce it, and it's from, I believe, between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and that's at night, and so that makes it hard for us to enforce it during the day. I think we could try and modify it a little bit, but I think we're going to end up running into more problems, because then everybody's going to be calling in, and that's really going to keep us busy on that. But I think it does need to be looked at a little bit more, it gives us a little bit more teeth to work on if it has a little more info in it, but I think all it takes is the community calling us, and we'll go out and do the best we can. You know, the ordinance is specific on the time, and so I think if we were to put our heads together and try and make it work, we can. Like I say, it's just going to, it's just going to take a little bit of time to make it work if we were to change the hours, because people are used to certain things, and it's just, it's a difficult situation to deal with.
Especially when you live out in the county, most people live out there because there's not too many.
That's the reason why they live out there, is because there's a little more freedom to be able to do a little bit more than having a state ordinance and stuff like that, but, I mean, it's something that we can work on.
So what's the remedy and penalties for the noise ordinance?
Well, the remedy for us is responding and giving them an opportunity to turn down their music or whatever noise they're making, and giving them a chance to take care of it right then and there. We respond back, then we obviously have the right to side them during those times, and sending them to the court and letting the court deal with it. The biggest thing is, I think, is the community just needs to work together, be a good neighbor. I mean, if you know you're causing a havoc to your neighbor, I mean, try and work with the neighbor. We'll try to be there to mediate, but, you know, sometimes they listen to us, sometimes they won't, so we take action.
Yeah, I looked at this page there, David, and I know that our attorney was, and I were talking about it, and state statute, you know, the only thing that comes close is the disorderly conduct, and it really doesn't cover it. And so, there's nothing in the state statute, and I think that that's something that we need to look at is maybe that ordinance, and see if we can't get it to give some broadening a little bit, so that we can give people these, because the one letter that was written, it's, she, it's almost harassment, what she's going through.
Right.
And so, once the complaint was made, and then they, now they're getting a kick out of it and continues to do it, and that's wrong. As, as our brother over there talked about, is that they go out there in the country to live, and they expect some peace and quiet and have a coyote wake them up now and then, and that's it.
Right.
And when you have someone playing loud music, then it is bad, and you need to do something about it.
And that's something we can look into and to establish a pattern. If it's happening and it's being done intentional, it, pretty much, we do our part, we send it to the judicial system, and it's up to the court to determine, yeah, there is a violation and enforce it.
And the statute, and if the ordinance is weak, there's nothing a judge is going to be able to do, we learned that.
Right.
Doesn't Silver City have a decibel level?
Yes.
That's appropriate during the day?
I'm not sure, I can reach.
Major judgment.
So during the day and?
Yeah, so you could say.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, how do you read it?
Buy a decibel.
You know, we do also have another ordinance which you consider is called the disorderly house, which we utilize for parties, and that's how we deal with them, but those also mainly occur at night. You know, a lot of the stuff for the noises is at night, and this ordinance doesn't cover during the daytime, so we can research and do a little bit of modifying, so maybe we can make it work.
Well, yeah, I think we'll probably have to revisit this.
Yeah.
Because I understand that between 6:00 and 10:00, you probably don't want to limit construction noise and things like that, but just playing loud music to harass a neighbor, that's, so. Okay. Anything else, Chris?
That's it.
All right. Anything else, Sheriff?
That's it, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Sheriff. Arthur, what do you have today?
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners, Steve's been out ill all week long, so I'm sitting in for him today. You get your report on your desk there. We did mail out our bills latter part of October, last Friday of October, we sent the bills out. So right now, as a collection, we're at 19.28% of our total that we expect to collect for the year, which normally, we've been sent around 96%. And so, right now, we're at 1,095,7121. It's been a very steady flow of people coming in and paying their property taxes, and really, truly, we haven't had much complaints, which has been really good. And what we've been noticing is the trend of full payments instead of the halves. In the past, we used to see everybody, of course, you know, had to December 10th come in and pay their first half, and it seems like people are paying everything in full now, so, which has been really, really good. So, we're very happy about our collections. Again, like I said, we've been working hard also with the assessor's offices, I'd like to thank Raoul and his staff on things that, after the tax roll received, working together and making things, coming out good. So, everything's been running really, really smooth. Like I say, our collection's been really good, so, do you have any other questions?
I'll be in first of December.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Assessor?
Mr. Chairman, board members, county manager, our county attorney. November 17, 2016, county commissioners' meeting. I would like to start out first, I've been involved in a lot of the community activities in Council Cano, and Sissy McAndrew asked me to go ahead and make a few statements about our next event, and it's on the 3rd of December, it's going to be for the tamale festival, and there was over 2,800 people last year, and we sold over 16,000 tamales. And this year, we're going to have a disco, disco competition, and thanks to Council Joe Ray, he brought it up, and we're just asking for some participants. We have about six or seven of them, and we need about 10 of them, so I just wanted to clear that out. And once again, it's going to be December 3rd, and it's going to be by Morningstar. I do want to thank a couple of our community hikers by the name of Carla and Mark, they went ahead and led our last hike up at the Borough Mountains, and I thank them so much because they love doing that, I wasn't able to be there. I got about three text messages this morning about asking the commission on where is the progress about the Lomo Verde Road and also Rosedale Road, and when are they going to do, have any completion on the Rosedale Road and also the Lomo Verde. And that's, like I say, I got those texts this morning. I think... Excuse me?
Probably should text it off.
I know, that's why we're just sipping on the Earl and letting them handle it.
Yeah, maybe if you respond to them, just give them Earl's number.
Okay, not a problem, and I did drive Lomo Verde, and let me tell you, that's a great road, except that wash, but that's going to take a lot for them.
I was doing it yesterday, and it's outstanding.
Yeah, they're doing a great job, yeah, being out in the field.
Why do you want to complain about the Rosedale Road, because that's nice.
Yes, I know, I know. Well, I want to congratulate the new elected officials that are coming in with our county commission, and also our new county clerk, and reelection for Steve Arminadis at the county treasurer. I really work very close with these individuals, and I do congratulate them, and I believe that the county commission is going to be a wonderful balance on the five-man commission, and I'm looking forward to working with the new commission. Thanks to the county clerk's office, they went ahead, had their count within 56 minutes on counting the votes in the election, and I want to, I want to say you guys did a great job, and I've had a few phone calls about that, and I think you guys do a great job, and I congratulate you, Robert and Marisa, and Marisa is just a wonderful department head, and on top of that, she's a great, great, going to be a great elected official. I've been attending the Taxation Stabilization Tax Policy Committee, and we have been speaking about tax reform on property taxes, and I'm going to get into not only the 3% cap, but we attended one in September, and John Arthur Smith, Senator John Arthur Smith, I actually auto-recorded this auto-audio statement that he did, and it was very interesting, because out of the blue, we were talking about grocery seat tax, and we were talking about property tax, and a lot of people don't really want to touch property tax, because there's such a lot of inequities on property tax. September, it was September 14, 15th of 2016. At the state legislature on Thursday, September 15th, Senator John Arthur Smith stressed talking about taxation pressure for new homeowners throughout the fundamental reform, and giving the county assessor's office the tools they need to provide a fair and equitable tax base throughout the improved property valuation. The state of New Mexico imposes a 3% cap, residential cap, on property values increases, and that's only residential. This cap results a fundamental issue of new home buyers whose properties become representatives of market values and subsidize homeowners of the residential cap, paying more in their share and taxes 5% to 6% more. But in return, these homeowners are getting the same level of services, garbage pickup, using the same streets, and subsidized residential, residence. Senator Smith proposed changing this policy. He also stated that other inequities in property valuation result the understaffed, underpaid, and undertrained assessor's office employees. I was really amazed when he started talking about this in front of the committee, because we actually did a presentation, four of us assessors did a presentation in front of the Taxation Stabilization Committee, and he just came out saying this, and I was really surprised that he just went out and said it. He called for the change of the assessor's position for an elected official to appointed position because of the assessor's running for office is premier for lower taxes and getting elected. This policy should change in the counties to have an adequate revenue stream. The senator also invited anyone who thinks property taxes are too high in the state of New Mexico, and to look at the rates paid in the state of the state of New Mexico, and we do have the lowest rate. It is stated that participating in the Revenue Stabilization and Tax Policy Follow-Up Meeting on December of 2016, to the strategy tax reform, the goal creating legislatures that will eliminate, provide fair and equitable property valuation to all property owners. And I was really surprised, I spoke to him afterwards, and I also had lunch with the chairman of the committee, where we've got to find a way on tax reform on property taxes. We spoke about exemptions, we spoke about the cap, we spoke about grazing, we spoke about the special method of valuation, and all kinds of issues. We will be meeting again sometime at the end of November or also in December, and I will definitely come by and report a lot of this information on over to you. Next, we're going to talk about the 3% cap. I spoke to our county manager about it, that we have been on a two-year cycle on reappraising property, and the interesting thing about it is, is I spoke with Property Tax Division yesterday, and I was asking them about a 6% cap for the simple reason that we didn't do it on the year 2015, and also, we did not do it in 2016. And the consensus was that we are on a two-year cycle. It took the county assessor's office to get back on its feet close to about a year and nine months, and we're still working on it. So finally, I got my sales data person run some numbers on the 3% cap. Comparison of models and capped values of residential properties in Grant County. The review does not cover all residential properties, but only a sample thereof. The sample group of the comparison of 11,226 accounts, all that contains residential property codes, any accounts that includes both residential, non-residential codes have been excluded from the study. In addition, certain outliers have been excluded as well. The outliers are the definition of properties where the modeled values exceeds over 300% of the cap value. These outliers where it deems the extreme that the potential of a skew of the results also includes the rare occurrence where a model is less than the cap value. This is over the, what they call it, override values. What happens is, when we set in of override values, it is not out of the system of Marshall and Swift, it's actually a value that we place in there. The study was broken down into three sections, according with only land, accounts with historical models, and accounts with Marshall and Swift models. Marshall and Swift is actually our database, and it's international, and we have actually embedded it into our Eagle Tyler technology. The historical MS, Marshall and Swift data includes improvement-only accounts. What that means is they are not taxed on the land, valued on the land, it's only valued for the building itself. Accounts only with land, 2,957 accounts are included. The average model value is 147.3% of the cap value. 50% of the accounts of the model values is less than 106% of the cap value. 31% of these accounts have model values that increase over 200% in the cap value. However, many of these accounts are improvement, once again, override, and unknown. There are 174 outliers, 5.6% are applicable to these accounts. This does not strike very high at this moment. Accounts with land and historical models, we're looking at 3,711 accounts included, the average model value is 129.4% of the cap value. 27.2% of the cap value models less than 106% of the cap value. 1.4% of these accounts have model values of over 200% of the cap value. There are 15 outliers, and only 0.4% acceptable to the accounts. Accounts with land and the Marshall Swift models, data for the accounts where the Marshall Swift model is suspected because of the new cost tables, including in 2015, inflates the model values of the Marshall Swift models almost are not really correct. 4,555 accounts are included. The average model of the, the average model value is 131.3, 13% of the cap value. 21.7% of these amount of the models is less than 106% of the cap values. 3.7 of these accounts of the models is over 200% of the cap values. There are 24, there are 21 outliers that will adjust 0.5%, and that also includes the improvements only. Once again, manufactured homes are considered... Once again, manufactured homes are considered personal property. And interesting to say, whenever you get a bunch of assessors talking about this, people get a little, you know, wonder, so if you have any questions so far about the cap? So, for the year two thousand and seventeen, we are going to increase property value of three percent. We'll be doing some presentation in front of the Green Chamber, the Chamber, all the municipalities, and I'm gonna break it down all down into tax dollars and also valuation. Any questions about the cap? I had a visitor come down a while back by the name of Tim Eichenberg, our State Treasurer, and I don't know if it was his honor to be around me, or my honor to be around him. We spent the whole day together, and we went over, I picked him up at the airport, and we went to Hurley, we went to North Hurley, we went to Baird, we went to Fort Baird, Santa Clara, we actually spent quite a lot of time at the Town of Silver City, and breaking down on what his plans are on investing in the state of New Mexico. It was quite interesting, because he had a, he had a presentation in front of the Chamber on that Thursday. And investing here in the state of New Mexico, the sad part about it, of a lot of his revenues is actually going out of state, and he's in the process of trying to see if we can invest more here in the state of New Mexico, so we can keep the revenue here, well, the investments here in the state of New Mexico. We did walk and checked out Fort Baird, due to the fact that I spoke to him about Santa Clara, he's in the process of seeing if they can have an investment with the, with Fort Baird itself, and he was somewhat appalled, because it was an embarrassment to the veterans, and we spoke about that also. He was my director from Property Tax Division, he actually, I battled with him during his time as the, as the tax consultant, when I was defending my values, and also was a Senator, and now he's a State Treasurer, and I hope to see him again pretty soon, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about the investments. I want to thank my staff, they have been working very hard, and my chief deputy just passed another course, she's on her third course on the International Association of Assessing Officers for trying to get her certifications. I will be sending four other employees for more training, come probably March, up in San de World County. I would like to make a statement here, that my appraisers, when they're off duty, they came and reported me yesterday, where they're off duty, you know, like on a weekend, or they're taking time off, and they're really interesting, because they'll walk up to me and say, "I don't know if we have these things on the tax rolls." Those griegos, there was two houses that weren't on, so we'll have to go back out there and put it on the tax rolls. And one of the problems is, is the state of New Mexico, with their permit situation, we're not really getting the permits at the proper time, so a lot of this value, you know, is not being put on the books, and it's all occurring revenue. And the interesting thing about it all is, I do need a lot more employees for the size of this county, and how much value is out there. I am really running real thin with my agricultural, and now we're gonna be sending out the renditions come December. The renditions is actually, it's actually a self-rendering on your personal property, your grazing, your livestock, manufactured homes. And I'll be also doing a presentation on breaking it down completely on this rendition period. One other thing is, Judge Hall, I know this is gonna be your last sitting up there at the County Commissioner, well, one more month, and he's actually, sits on the Board of Directors for the New Mexico Association of Counties. I actually sat for eight years in the Board of Directors for the New Mexico Association of Counties. I was actually the Chair of the Assessors Affiliate, I was on the Board of Directors, Executive Board for the NMAC, Blue Ribbon Committee for Bill Richardson. And once he steps down, there will be an election for the Board of Directors for the New Mexico Association of Counties, and I would like to state, not only with the new Commission, with the Commission that's in, and all the elected officials, that I will be running for that position. I do want to represent the Grant County to the highest, to my potential of thirty-seven years in the Assessor's Office. Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob, you got anything?
Thank you. I do not.
Okay. Nice election. You have anything today? Commissioner?
No, I just continue to work on two costs, and so, but dispatch maybe, that's pretty much it.
Commissioner?
Well, just wanted to say we did have a good election, I really pumped up about the way you had the results, I was driving back from Albuquerque, but when I got by Hatch, I started listening all the way down. You guys, you guys were on your radio, let me tell you, you did a really good job. Also, wanted to congratulate all the new officials. It's going to be interesting, but I think we can all come together and work together like we should, and we should be expected to. We did have our Echo Watershed meeting yesterday, we did discuss our Twin Sister Creek project. There was a tour that was taken by Mr. Larish, and the others, others that are participating within the Twin Sister Creek project over in Arizona, and they did check out the, and I'm sure he gave a report on it, but they did check out the systems that they have there that could be comparable to what we're planning here in Grant County. So, I'm really excited that that did take place. On our next, our next Echo Watershed meeting, we will be bringing in the EPA and also the Game and Fish to be partners within this group, and so we can work together and make sure that we, that we meet all the environmental requirements and game fish requirements, so we can put in for dollars that are available through their programs. So, that's, that's next on the agenda. I also am going to be running for the Board of Directors, I've announced that to most of the elected officials. I've done this myself, as a matter of fact, I did this my first term as County Clerk, I did it for four years. When I left, Raoul did replace me, I was on the, he automatically got onto the Board of Directors because I left. And, and I have served as the Grant County, I'm sorry, as the County Affiliation President, I served as the County, Grant County, I'm sorry, Clerk Affiliation Treasurer, and I do have the experience, it's been a lot of fun, and throughout the years, I've served in many, many boards. I have talked to most elected officials, and I will be running for the, for the Directorship again. I have served under the Secretary of State's AVRS Committees. I've served, I've served a lot of boards over in Santa Fe, and I do- -to represent Grant County on the Board of Directors.
That's all I've got. Cindy, you snuck up on us.
Good morning, Chair and County Commissioners, and I apologize if I'm up here at the wrong time, I'm a little confused, I usually have done public input portion before, and was told, "Well, you should probably do it when everybody else is," so I was a little confused about when I should-
But usually, we have county reports on park session days, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I was out at Cliff, I do my, I was doing my driver's ed, so-
It's fine, we still want to hear from you.
Thank you so much. It's an important update, I promise. As you know, you know, there's been a lot of cuts, and all our DWI program funding comes specifically out of statute, and we have a grant portion, and we have a distribution portion. Our distribution portion was down already from fiscal year sixteen due to some, because it's based on gross receipts, and in this formula, and apparently, our gross receipts were down in Grant County, so my, my distribution was already down twenty thousand. As you all know, in January, they did a sweep of a lot of money that was sitting there, and apparently, you know, DFA, our programs are run by DFA, but the local government division. DFA, not the local government division, gave the legislators kind of some bad data, bad numbers, and so they swept a lot of our money. And come September, they realized, oops, we're gonna have to, our distribution's gonna be much lower. So, they, they gave me a revised budget and said, "This is your new distribution amount," which was thirty thousand dollars less than what they expected. And then a month later, we got another revised one, and our budgets were cut for DWI, not the five percent that pretty much everybody else got, but thirty-five percent. Yeah, so it was quite a big cut, and, and it basically was based on bad data, because the, the money that tax and rev, they collect the cash revenues, and then they, they send it to DFA, and, and it sits there in a pot, and we get it quarterly. And so, when that money was sitting there, apparently, they assumed that it was just extra money, which it wasn't, it was money to run our programs with. So, every program got cut about thirty-five percent. The first cut, I was able to, to just cut out law enforcement contracts and our evaluation, and not affect anything else, pretty much, you know, some little travels, things like that. The second cut, you know, we had to wrestle with what we were gonna do, and Coricantinas, frankly, was in danger. I met with Sarlene, and Randy, and Kim, and we may have come up with a solution, we'll find out a little bit more. I was told to wait until our next distribution came in, which should be about December tenth. I do have a revised budget for you, Linda, but I've been told to wait, so that's what I was waiting on, I'm sorry. You know, we're still, we're still doing well, I didn't want to lay off employees, we have a hundred and twenty people that we're supervising under probation, that's been up, we just, we've done, we've gotten like thirty new clients just in the last two months. And my prevention person is in six schools right now, and I just completed a couple schools for driver's ed. So, we're very busy, and using our money like we should. Yesterday, the DWI affiliate, a few of us went up in front of Courts and Corrections to get there, try and, we have some things out there to try and keep our money whole for next year. They took, for some reason, one point six million of our funding went to Drug Court. Now, we understand Drug Court is important, and we fully support them, but we went from five hundred thousand support to one point six million in a year, when they had already taken a lot of money anyways. One of the things we're asking, and UMAC is supporting us on, is for them to fund Drug Court out of, out of other funds, instead of our funding. And, and then also, there's still that little specter of HSD, trying to take our programs, move them from DFA over to HSD, which would really splinter our programs, because they only do, they do prevention and treatment, and they would basically, they want the treatment money taken, and of course, to use to Medicaid. When most of our clients aren't Medicaid, the treatment that they get isn't approved for Medicaid. So, that would leave a lot of people without treatment, from our clients. And, and then, of course, they don't, that would take away our, our compliance program, which is, which is very important to courts and to the community. You know, our compliance with issues such as treatment, and DWI school, and community service, and jail time, and we have a lot of people in the SCRAM, all that would no longer be under the county, and may go away, if it's not then funded under the county. So, so we're fighting that, and hopefully, we can keep, keep us under DFA. So, that's my report, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Cindy?
So, what's the value of the human life?
Apparently, the-
Apparently, means nothing.
Sorry.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
So, I guess that just leaves me, I, first of all, want to congratulate all the people that ran for office, whether you won or lost, you've done something that takes a tremendous amount of courage to do, it's not a lot of fun, at least, it's not fun for me. So, I congratulate you, I congratulate the winners, I look forward to working with you in, in January. We did tour the Conference Center last week, or the week before, last week, it's very nice, we are in the process of trying to figure out how to manage it now, we thought we had a plan, and the first shot was fired, and the plan changed, so we're back out again. The noise ordinance, I think, and I know this is probably not exactly what you want to hear today, but I think what I'll do is, I'll wait till we have our other sitting Commissioners, it would be unfair to set somebody on there that's just gonna change over in January. We will probably appoint a committee to review that noise ordinance, and I'll work closely with the Commissioners and management, and the County Attorney to decide who's gonna be on that. If I'm still Chairman now, somebody else may be doing that. Cindy's plight is unfortunately something that we're hearing with every department, whether it be the hospital, detention center, DWI, it's only a matter of time until it's other departments. And then, on the other side of that, every department, started with the Assessor today, with the Sheriff a couple, couple of meetings ago, the Treasurer, the meeting before that, or the meeting after that, we all need more people, we need more money, we need, it's a tremendous burden to balance all that from being up here. And I want you guys to know that we are trying our best to balance that, but we can't make money, we can't print it like the federal government does, we have to stay within budget. And no matter how much we feel empathy for you, and the jobs you do, like I said, we just can't make money. So, that being said, unless anybody has seconds, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. Second? I was in favor, Senator Bob St. I.
Aye.
Motion passed.